Testing one, two. Testing. Testing one, two.
We'll get started in one minute.
Look, Mike?
Yeah. Well, good evening, everyone. It is 6:32. I'm calling this regular meeting of the Committee of the Whole to order, and this meeting has been given public notice in accordance with Section 19.83 and 19.84, Wisconsin statutes in such form that will apprise the general public and news media of such a matter that is intended for consideration and action. Role call is showing that all trustees are here. Terry Kaminsky is absent as accused, and Meg Cuts, I'm sure she'll be in shortly.
She's absent.
She's absen-- oh, that's right. Okay, thank you very much. Meg Cuts is absent as accused. We're now into citizens' input, and would anybody like to come forward tonight and speak? And please keep your comments to the four minutes, because we got the Brewers game to go home to and watch, so. Good evening and welcome.
Wrong side.
There you go. And we do know that we have to have a better solution for these buttons. They're very challenging, so.
Lynn Schauer, Bednarson, Plonny Court. And I have a new name. I'm known as the resident in the front row. So, just so you know that. The only thing I'm going to talk about tonight is I looked up some responsibilities of a budget board, and it's just a reminder. I looked up the law. You are-- we're a representative government. You represent the citizens, and yourself, obviously, but I refer to us as taxpayers. You're here to safeguard our assets and appropriate the use of funds, which is our taxes, maintaining transparency and accountability to the taxpayers, okay? Our system is a representative system for residents on behalf of them, and you are to search for acceptable balances for the majority. Everything we do here can't please everybody, okay? You're here to please the majority of the people. And elective officials, this is written in the Wisconsin law books, elected officials must be responsive to the needs of their constituents, and they should attempt to balance the values for the majority, okay? I don't see that with the way this voting has been going, but the only thing I'm going to talk about tonight is the public hearing notice publication. When I drove around the golf course the other night, I saw two signs for a public hearing. One was in front of the golf course. It was way back. You couldn't even read what was on it. You'd have to pull in the driveway and read it. And the other one was on North on Division, North on Division Road on Meckewaun, right in the middle of those apartments. Well, the rest of the people aren't going to hear it. Now, yes, the project affects certain people. However, our voting, all taxpayers are affected by everything. So when we have a public hearing notice, I would like to see signs on County Line, where there's tons of traffic, Pilgrim Road, and on Meckewaun Road, so you can read the signs, and probably on the road where you go on a quick trip there. And I like to-- we want to get-- I was very excited to see the public that came out last night. I think the people really appreciated that, and so I'd like to see more signage. So if you guys can do that, that would be great, because I'll be looking for them when the dates come up, so that we-- the people can come. We want to get a big turnout for this, so we have as many people in our village that-- and who knows? They might like what you got planned. I don't know, but the more we have, the better off we'll get. You're here to represent us, not your personal opinions. We can use them, but you're here to take care of the taxpayers that we're responsible for. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to speak tonight? Good evening and welcome.
Scott Affley, W-159 and 10514 Old Farm Road. The only people in the audience, besides Lynn and myself, are people that have to be here and up there. So I know last night was a full meeting, a full-- you had a full house of people for hot button topics, and there may be some in this room that question why a couple of us show up every meeting. Well, we're not-- I'm not about hot button anything. I'm about concerns I have in this village that I've lived here for 32 years, not five years, 32 years. And I have a stand in this village, as you all do, okay? So the budget process is what it is. We made some changes. That was good that we went to committees. The committees probably should have been given more information to work with ahead of time, so they could do more work on it, but that was a good move. So we're making progress there. And people might say, you know, why aren't people here? Is it apathy? What is it? No. The, you know, based on the optic or what people see in the village, and you know, either being a village trustee can be-- you can say, "I'm popular," "I'm not popular," or however you carry yourself, but the thought process in the village is that it just doesn't matter if I come or not. It doesn't matter if I send in comments or not. It just doesn't matter. That's the thought out there, which hopefully people are trying to change that sit on this board. But that's what's out there, and I think you probably know that. So I would like to see more people here, but, you know, they're not going to come unless something directly bothers them, like a solar farm or a culvers with apartments, or whatever it is. It is what it is. So there's limited things you can do in regards to cuts. Basically, you were given capital borrowing cuts. You are not giving anything operationally to work with that I see, that I've ever seen. So that makes you kind of restricted in what you can do. What I am seeing, though, is we keep shifting operational costs out of budgets over to borrowing, and that's a trend that's been going on for at least three or four years, more and more and more, to quote-unquote "balance the budget." Well, guess what? That is the same as paying your mortgage on a credit card, okay? It's not going to work. You are risking fiscal peril at some point if you keep doing that, and there's some big-ticket items that we have to pay for, not the fault of these people in this room necessarily, maybe the fault that either staff or village board trustees in the past ignored for 20 years, so we have to fix three lift stations at a time. That's kind of ridiculous. If you ask anybody in Germantown, why is it happening? But we are kind of faced with what we're faced. So, I mean, do what you can, but the way things are looking here, all we're going to be doing is raising taxes more and more and more on the village. There's really-- the TIDS won't close for seven years, six years, no matter what anyone says. We all know that. And what are we going to do? Because we have lift stations to fix and that. So I said it last time. I said it this time. Good luck. You know, I know you're limited in what you can do, but this is not good. Anyone-- I help clients with budgets all the time, wanting to see how they can make things stretch and make things work for them. It's part of my job, and you have a much important-- more important budget to do, but this is-- this hopefully is the beginning of trying to do things the right way, because just transferring operational costs out of budgets into borrowing or cutting things that the community considers important, like the rec department and the library, we have to start looking for cuts in other places, and I hope you'll consider it in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to speak tonight? Anyone on WebEx? Any public comments that were emailed?
Yes.
All right. This is an email that we received today from Mr. and Mrs. Schneider. Says, "Hello, please change the Cal meeting from October 14th, 2025, to October 15th, 2025." Just-- actually, we received this yesterday. "Just like tonight, we wanted to watch both the Planning Commission and the Milwaukee Brewers playoff game, so we flip-flopped back and forth until the ninth inning, then we stayed with the Brewers. The best part of the whole game, but they lost. We heard our president most likely wanted to watch the game tonight, too. How many others wanted to watch or even be there tonight, but had the meeting. The budget can wait for one day. We don't know when the-- when again the Milwaukee Brewers will be the playoffs like this again. So we are asking for you to do the right thing. Go Brewers. Go. Also, when they continue to win, please adjust the upcoming meetings in the future, too. Thank you, the Schneiders."
I'll entertain a motion to cancel the meeting. I'm joking. I'm joking. We got to get this done. And go Brewers. They're going to have a great night tonight, and I'm traveling to LA tomorrow, and I hope to go to the game Thursday night wearing my Brewer stuff, so all will be good. Any other comments from anyone? Okay, moving on to item four, meeting minutes, October 8th, 2025 minutes. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve as presented.
I have a second.
I'll second.
We have discussion. Say none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We are going to move item five, unfinished business, to the end after new business.
Do you need a motion to do so? I make a motion to move unfinished business to in between new business and adjournment.
I have a second.
Second.
Discussion. Say none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We are now on to new business. Item A, 2026 Capital Reserve Fund Budget.
I make a-- I make a motion to lessen the AV update for the senior center from $22,500 to $2,000, due to-- that is literally what is needed, a new TV and access points and maybe a Roku. I don't see any reasoning for what they are planning, to put in old technology. That makes no sense.
Second. Second.
Not to interject, this is a different fund than the capital fund. This is the Capital Reserve Fund, which was a fund that was set up last year at the recommendation of this board to fund capital projects using cash. I included in this tonight's meeting, as you guys shifted $109,000 from the general fund to the Capital Reserve Fund. So there are currently no projects budgeted in this fund, only interest earnings for 2026.
But since there's only two items on the agenda, I'm not quite sure where I would make this motion. And since it was a capital item.
You know, this was a-- we did complete review of the capital budget at the meeting last week. You know, my understanding was that we'd gotten through all of the budgets. There were proposed amendments or changes. We did not include that on the agenda for tonight for that reason. The operating budget is on there, the general fund budget, which, you know, there were some questions about that and some additional potential changes, and that was included on the agenda for tonight, but we did not include the capital budget.
So where am I supposed to make my motions to make cuts for anything in my book right now?
Well, anything on the general fund budget is under item B in new business. You know, we did go through all of the capital projects last week, and there were--
So are you saying I can't make a motion on any capital projects, even though our budget is not fully approved?
Yeah, but not tonight. There will be another opportunity on November 17th for additional changes at that point.
Okay, so then continue on new business. Item A of nothing.
Okay, we're Capital Reserve Fund Budget. Mr. Kraklow.
The finance review. So in front of you and including the packet is the Capital Reserve Budget. Again, this village board shifted interest earnings from the general fund to the Capital Reserve Fund. So for 2026, we're projecting $107,000 in interest earnings towards this fund, which the village board can use. Sorry. And it's not in my PowerPoint. So what the board is trying to do, what staff is trying to do, is build up a cash reserve that this board or future boards can use to cash-finance capital projects. So for 2026, we're only projecting interest earnings and no expenses out of this fund.
You have a slide that you showed?
Not for the Capital Reserve Fund, no.
It will come up in a minute here. There we go.
Okay. Question? Trustee Baum.
So how does this fund get funded?
Interest earnings on investments.
Interest earnings on investments?
So historically, the village board had received revenue in the general fund for interest earnings on our investments. A portion of that was shifted in 2025 to the Capital Reserve Fund, and then at the last committee, the whole meeting, they shifted the remaining interest earnings from the general fund to the Capital Reserve Fund.
And approximately how much? So we got $100,000 in 2025? 2024 and 2025?
In 2025, we budgeted interest earnings of $58,000 in the Capital Reserve Fund. Year-to-date earnings is $35,000.
And total in that account is?
$35,000.
Total in the account is $35,000.
Correct.
So in the whole time we've done this, now, we can spend that $35,000 today to take stuff off of our list? Or are we trying to build that up to some larger number for some larger purpose?
I think the intent of this from the board discussions last year was to create a long-term fund for the next generation of improvements. I think, you know, as we've heard a lot in public comment and as there's been a conversation among the board, you know, we've had a number of very large capital projects that have hit in a short period of time, and I know we've had discussions about, well, if somebody 20 years ago had, you know, thought about creating a fund like this or setting aside money for some of these large improvements, you know, the burden on the taxpayers today would be much lower than it is. And I think that was the intention. And I think that was the intention when the board created this fund a year ago was to, you know, identify a source of funds that may be small at first, but sort of like a retirement account if you start early. And you put a little bit of money aside each year, that does grow. But I think the intention was that it, it be accumulated for, you know, over a long period of time so that, you know, we built a, a great public works facility that, that's going to last, you know, at least 50 years, maybe longer. We're looking at police and fire facilities. But eventually those will have to be replaced, too. And, you know, if, if there's earnings on investments, which is a relatively, has been a relatively small revenue that's gone towards the general fund budget. But if that is put aside each year in this fund, then, you know, when there's, long after, well, hopefully after I'm retired 20 years from now or, or something like that, that there will be funds available for the, the future board and residents to be able to, to offset the cost, at least a part of the cost of, of those expenses.
Is this fund geared towards a specific use? Or can we allocate this money for any purpose along the road?
This is a fund that's created by the village board. It can be changed by the village board. So, you know, in essence, you can use these funds for whatever you would like, whenever you would like. Again, you know, I think I kind of summarized what the original intention was, but that is at the discretion of the village board.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know where everybody's thought is, where everybody's ideas are, but I, just thinking off the top of my head, 10 years from now, we put in $30,000 a year. We have $300,000 plus interest. We can buy a patrol truck.
And, and just be clear, we're going to be putting in roughly $167,000 a year. For 2025, only a portion of the interest was allocated in 2026 and future years, assuming nothing changes. 100% of the interest for the general fund will be within this fund. So that's roughly $167,000 a year.
Okay, so we can either save it for long term or we can start paying for stuff now, is what I'm trying to understand. And we could do either one.
Correct.
If we wanted to spend $160,000,000 and take something off of the borrowing, the capital borrowing, we can do that if we choose to.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Chad Miller.
So how did, we had an original balance, as I'm reading this, of $58,000?
The original balance was zero. We budgeted interest earnings of $58,000 for 2025. So year-to-date, we've made $35,000.
Oh, okay, so that the 35 is the actual?
Yes.
But we, we had $58,000 and we put it into debt service. So that was something else, correct? Don't you remember? It was, it was like the same amount, $58,000.
So.
We had some money left over and we.
Correct, so, so, yes, last year.
That's what I was getting.
We had additional state aid. And what we did is we reduced the general fund interest earnings by $58,000 and shifted that to the Capital Reserve Fund. So the additional state aid offset the reduction in interest earnings. And that's similar to what the committee, the whole did last meeting, where we shifted $109,000 out of the general fund and over to the Capital Reserve Fund and supplemented that with the additional state transportation aid.
Okay. How did you calculate that we're going to get $167,000 every year?
Just based on the historical actuals of what we received. You know, the general fund balance doesn't change all that often, so it's relatively easy to, to track across years.
Well, where has it been all these years?
In the general fund. We budgeted roughly $167,000 a year in the general fund. With the interest earnings.
Have we been using it?
Yep, it was just part of the normal general fund budget.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? I do have a couple of comments. This is the first time I'm seeing this, and I, I like this, like a rainy day fund. I think it's great. But we budgeted last year $58,000. Actual came in at 35. Why the gap?
Well, that's just the year-to-date, so that's interest earnings through September. So we still have roughly three or four more months of interest earnings to allocate there.
So what's your projection? That we'll meet plan?
I think we'll come in right around $58,000.
Okay.
The one thing that, that I would add to the finance director's comments is that the earnings on investments can be difficult to predict. There is a fair amount of fluctuation, you know, based on, on what's going on with interest rates. Right now, interest rates are relatively high, so earnings on investments are, are generally a little bit better. But, but there is a lot of fluctuation with that from year to year.
Yeah, without doing, you know, taking too much time, because we spent a lot of time at the last cow meeting and also last night. To me, this is a, a red flag that we're missing the boat from a budgeting standpoint. I'm used to spreading out the $58,000 month over month, over 12 months, and putting in the actual each month so that we get a better feeling of where we're at month over month and have a year-to-date. And then at the end, just, I'm a firm believer in managing by exception. And if we're plus or minus 5%, unfavorable or, or favorable to plan, that would be on some type of managed by exception report. So we look at that to drive everything that we do, so.
And generally, I, I agree with that. On the earnings on, on these investments, there's not a, a lot of, of month-to-month management on it. We do use ailers to, to manage these investments. They're, you know, generally, the investments that we're talking about here are, you know, anywhere from, from three months to, what's the maximum, five-year? Five-year investments?
Yeah, typically, yeah, we have some, very few five-years, but yeah.
Yeah, I, I think state statute limitation is, is five-years. And, and there's very strict statutory restrictions on, on what we can invest in. And then the other, there's a fair amount of accounting work that goes into it, too, because the, all of the, for investment purposes, all of the village funds are, are, are mixed, intermingled, so that you get a, a larger pool to invest and, and it allows for longer-term investments. And then to actually report by, by fund, then those, the investment earnings like year-to-date have to be allocated out. So I, I think it's a, it's a really good point. And I think we can do better on, on how we're reporting these things. But it, but that's kind of the rationale for why that's, that's not reported right now on a monthly basis.
Yeah, typically, we, we try to allocate interest earnings on a quarterly basis, just based on the priority of the things we're working in at the finance department. We do hope to get to a monthly position at some point. Right now, we're, we're doing quarterly.
All right, and I, I know we talked a lot about the projections and forecasting going forward on a whole bunch of different things. And this would be one of those accounts that I would love to see going out five years and, and what that dollar amount would be, so.
Yeah, I think that's something, either ailers or whoever, our financial investment advisory, they do that type of work as well. They can come in and do those projections.
All right, great. Any further comments before we move on? Yes, trustee Borst.
Can you expand on the investments and like, what types of investments are those? Are they stocks, bonds, a mix?
I, I can, I can't give you a complete list off the top of my head. This is, and I can follow up and, or we can follow up and, and send you that information. It is restricted by state statute as far as the, the types of investments that we can utilize. Generally, stocks and bonds, private stock, well, stocks are not allowed. There may be some privately issued bonds that are included in there. Most of what you see here are, in that account, are going to be a lot of treasuries, some municipal or school district-type bonds. But it is, it is generally a very conservative approach and with the, with the emphasis being on, on maintaining the, the corpus of the fund and, you know, as opposed to trying to maximize the returns.
Okay, so generally, it's a conservative, lower-risk.
Yes.
Overall portfolio, portfolio.
Yes, absolutely.
Thanks.
Sure.
Any other comments? Okay, moving on to item B, 2026 General Fund Budget Wrap-Up.
Yep. Go ahead.
I have several things I'd like to remove. From A.
You may. Do you want to hear the presentation first and?
Not really, I'd like to make these motions because the Brewers are about to start in two minutes.
Okay.
I would like to remove the copy machine from recreation that is budgeted for $5,000.
Second. We have discussion.
There has been nothing used to date, and this, I went through this with Matt. He confirms this is something that is good that could be removed.
And the copying machine is right over here?
No, for recreations.
And they're not using it today?
There has been no expense to date.
I'll, I'll, I'll just follow up. So we, we budget the copier lease into the IT department. That is something that was changed either in '24 or '25. We did leave some additional funds in the recreation department and the planning department for copier expenses in case there are other things that came up that we, that we didn't foresee when we made that switch. Over the last two years, there hasn't been anything that's been charged to those accounts. Recreation has $5,000, planning is $1,200. So I think it'd be okay to, to reduce those line items.
Okay. Gil, can I ask a stupid question? Do you use the copying machine today? How often do you use it?
And just to be clear, Mr. President, we're not, we're not removing the copier from, from that department. We're removing the, the funds allocated to that department as we have, we have the IT contract in a different department budget. So there, there's no effect on the operation of the recreation department for the copier machine.
Thank you. Further discussion. Trustee Jan Miller.
Where did it move to?
It didn't move. Like, the, the, the funds are moving, the actual physical copying.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Where did the funds?
Uh, in the IT budget, we, is where we budgeted all the copiers in Village Hall.
Further discussion. Say none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
Okay, next one, I would like to remove the senior center copy machine. Now, this is actual, an actual physical machine. If they do need, it hasn't been used, and if they do need to make copies or print things, they can get a laser jet printer. They only would need one of them. They don't need a huge machine for that cost. So that is my motion.
Second.
The amount?
We have discussion. Trustee people, this is an actual copying machine.
Physical machine.
Senior Center. And no monies have been charged to that account?
The only point I was going to make is that, that's not really a, a budget action. We're not reducing any, any budget authority from any of the departments. So that might be more of an operational thing. The senior center is currently also allocated to the IT budget.
So then where did we see this? When we were going over this, Matt?
If you look at, when we were going over the actual invoices, it was part of the invoice that gets charged to the IT department.
Okay, so then we shouldn't be charging it to the senior center?
It's not, it's not getting charged to the senior center. It's getting charged to the IT budget.
But when you look into the further line items.
When, when you look at the actual invoice, it breaks it out by building, but all of that is getting charged to the IT copier.
True. True, but I think the copiers need to be, the copiers is a huge expense across the board for the village. We need to get that under control. We do not need to be paying Gordon Fleisch for $15,000 each year when honestly you could get laser jet printers for the each, and you could buy every single one who needs to print things, a laser jet printer. And it would be far cheaper than using these machines that we are leasing and costs a lot to repair, to maintain, and to print on. Steve, just a heads up, next year, maybe we can look into that. I'll continue on because I know I'll keep going.
Hold on a second. Can you, we have a, a, a motion and a second.
I will draw my motion.
Thank you.
Um, next one, the parks professional development. It's $4,000 to train people on how to operate the splash pad. That seems excessive to me. I'd like to reduce that to $1,000. That is my motion.
Second. We have discussion.
It's excessive to, to train somebody for $1,000.
And someone, staff, come up and tell us why it's $4,000 and if it's acceptable to go down to 1,000? And what's involved in that?
Uh, we can make the reduction if that's what the board chooses to do. The plan for the money this year, the splash pad, as everybody is aware, went under a lot of maintenance and changes. There's a lot of new technology in there. The funds that we have allocated are to send three staff to certified pool operator training and then bring Keriko Aquatics onsite to train the remainder of the staff. Each day, somebody from our staff goes in, checks chemicals, monitors, adjusts things. And then in addition to that, they do it all weekend. So that goes through our on-call rotation. So again, it's just a matter of getting everybody educated on the new system. And again, I, there is a safety element to it. There's chemicals, there's acid, there's chlorine. It's important that everybody understands what they're doing. And I'm trying to take a proactive approach to this and make sure we've got the right training.
Well, I have a solution for that because I actually closed a commercial pool just recently this week. I am very familiar with operations of testing. I have my own chemical kit and everything. There's no technology. There is only chemistry when testing the waters. And honestly, besides turning on the fountains and turning off the fountains, all you're doing is testing the water, and that takes literally five minutes. And you can teach somebody in five minutes.
I think the.
Teach myself.
I think the training that we're going to go through is a little bit more intensive. It's what to do when the chemicals are out of adjustment.
Very easy as well. I manage the pool.
I'm going to leave it a board decision. I, I really don't have more.
And I'm, I'm presuming there's a certification and we get that certification to.
I don't have a certification. And I manage a commercial pool. I'm literally the only person in charge of a commercial pool, and I don't have a certification. Why is that needed, then?
Are you expected by the county? Do you have a license for your commercial?
Yes, we do.
Again, just trying to be proactive and make sure that we're doing everything we can.
Every year, I meet with the inspector.
Yeah, I, I know, I, I know, I'm familiar with your commercial pool. I've been in your commercial pool. It's part of a.
When? You're not allowed.
I know.
I'm just kidding.
I know. But this is different. This is a village municipality and from a.
It's not so much different.
From a risk standpoint, if best practice is to get some type of certificate, training and then certification, if there is an incident hypothetically with the splash pad, I can't imagine what that would be.
I could.
We want to hang our hat on that, yes, our operators have been trained and certified, doing all we can to minimize risk. But my question would be, is there something from a building control standpoint or a control standpoint that we could put on what you're talking about so that, just like we have the lift stations, we can, we can get reports via our smart devices, that type of thing?
There, there is technology there for that, and we, and we certainly can do that. I don't know that that's going to take the place of all the startup that takes, that happens every day. Yes, monitoring for problems can be done via.
From an exceptional standpoint.
Yeah.
So the question is, are you comfortable going from $4,000 to $1,000? And with that $1,000, are you, do you feel comfortable with that?
I will not be able to accomplish the training with Keriko Aquatics coming to talk to everybody with $1,000.
You need to have quote-unquote everybody, or can you identify one person that's your go-to person?
So what I would do would be if, if $1,000 is where we land on this, I would take two people and send them for CPO training or see what we could scale back with our training with Keriko, with everybody. Those would be the, the two options that I would explore.
Why do you have to train with Keriko? Why can't you do some training through the county? I know the county inspectors are more than willing to train people on how to test water.
This isn't necessarily about testing water. It's about having a good understanding of all the pumps and the functions that are going on in there, training specific to the site. Keriko Aquatics built the interior of the splash pad, so again, they're.
So you're thinking since they built it that we need to be certified with the builder? But that has nothing to do with being responsible to the county or the village?
Two different things. If we, if we have the entire 4,000, we're going to send three people to go get certified pool operator. It has nothing to do necessarily with Keriko. It's an actual certification.
And how much is it?
$500 a person.
It's $500 per person? So then why is there 4,000 budgeted?
Because the other remaining dollars is to bring Keriko in to sit down with all of our staff at the DPW and talk about site-specific for our splash pad here. and talk about site specific, uh, for our splash pad here and give everybody an overview of what's going on.
And we don't have anybody currently that has a good understanding of the overview of the splash pad and the pipes and the specifics? That could actually train other people?
We do, and that's how we've done it for a long time. Again, I'm trying to be proactive and do good things for the village and make sure that we're covering things from a liability standpoint. Let me give an example. Several years ago, we had an automatic fill valve that didn't stop feeding chlorine into the system. It was found in the morning as the splash pad was getting ready to be started. Obviously that can become a dangerous situation if it gets out of, out of kilter. President Soderbergh, to the point you were making today, we could definitely use some technology to our advantage and probably receive a notification for that. Uh, I'd have to look into further how we're going to do that because again, our weekend on call is the person receiving that information and would have to do something with it. So, uh, there's some logistics to work through there, but again, this is about liability and having a good understanding of what we're doing every day from a safety standpoint.
I've replaced those valves myself, actually. So why don't you put my number on call and I'll make sure I come and help and fix.
Give you the same invite I gave you last week. Happy to meet and talk about it with you in person.
My motion stands. I want to reduce it to $1,000.
Further discussion. Trustee Warren.
So Scott wants to go through this training. This isn't an annual thing. This is good now internally.
Yeah, once, once somebody gets a CPO, I think it's, it's good for life. I don't know that for sure, but I'm pretty sure it's a license that you receive and you're a licensed certified pool operator. There may be some continuing credits that you get along the way. The overview is strictly just an education for our people. It's a one-time thing. Just an expenditure we're trying to make this year to kick things off with the new equipment.
I appreciate you being proactive on this. I hate to cut neckels and dimes when it comes to a safety or a liability issue.
Yeah, but it's not exactly correct even.
Yeah, the floor.
Go ahead, Warren.
So I would be against the, the reduction of this.
Trustee Jan Miller.
As you stated, I, I believe we have new equipment for the splash pad. And, um, we appreciate getting some new equipment in there. And so, um, I'm, I'm for funding that. And if we can, you know, save a thousand, but if we're, if you, if the actual cost is to get the three people certified and then be able to teach the rest of the, the team, it's the 4,000, then I'm, I'm behind it. Thank you.
That adds up to 1,500, so.
Further discussion.
I obviously see where this is going and I'm not going to waste people's time. So we can let the motion go to a vote and I'll go on to my next item.
Further discussion. I, I do know, uh, just point of reference, you know, at Summer Fest, they have a splash pad there. And they literally had a lifeguard, uh, on a, um, stool with a flotation device. And I asked a stupid question, why? She said, because we're required to do this from a liability standpoint. I really didn't want to spend any more time because I thought it was really stupid. But, uh, I understand where you're coming from, from a chemical standpoint. I understand that. So, but I would also, I would welcome you doing some further research on some type of control device that you would get some type of notification so that you could manage by exception and then respond, that type of thing. So you don't have to have somebody going in there on a daily basis. You just manage by exception. So. Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Chance for the opposed, please?
Opposed to the reduction?
To, for the reduction?
Okay.
No, this is for not reducing.
Not reducing.
Correct.
Opposed is not in favor of reducing the amount. Yes.
Thank you for that clarity.
Please keep your hands up.
It's everybody but me, Dan.
Yes. Okay.
Sorry. All right, next, uh, highway department professional development. I would like to lower that from 15,000 to 7,500.
Second.
Uh, discussion. Could you repeat the motion again?
Yes, I would like to lower the highway, or I'm sorry, the highway department professional development account from 15,000 to 7,500.
15 to 7,500. Um, Matt, do you mind coming forward?
Go figure.
Yeah, and I can add a little context there too. So historically, this, uh, budget had been probably in the 10,000 or less range. Uh, for 2025, we increased it to roughly $20,000 to account for some CDL training that the village, uh, wanted to, to partake in. Uh, if new staff coming on board didn't have their CDL license, the village is going to sponsor them getting that license. Uh, so in that event, we, we still reduce it from $20,000 to $15,000 for 2026. The CDL license costs roughly $6,000 per student. So depending on how many students we have, um, you know, that, that's where that variable comes in.
And how many new people are we planning on hiring without CDLs that would go to training?
That could be a difficult question to answer. Um, this last year, we did hire one, uh, staff member that we had to send through training. We thought the costs initially were going to be a lot higher. Uh, when we put the 25 budget together, we learned that the costs weren't quite as expensive as we thought they were going to be. And that is again, why you see the reduction there.
So I'd like to, and it's $6,000, is that right, Matt?
Yes.
Sorry. Yeah, so I'd actually, I, I would like to modify my motion. So I'd like to lessen it to $6,000, if that's okay with my second.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Trustee Bob.
So the intent is that we would only hire one person that doesn't have a CDL?
We are allowing to hire for one person that doesn't have a CDL. Which honestly, they could work here for a year, get their CDL and then go elsewhere and make a ton more money. So I don't know.
Do we not have it as a requirement that you need a CDL for this particular job position?
We, we do, and it's been a discussion for quite some time. Uh, the CDL regulations have changed. Uh, you do need an actual education. You used to be able to do self-training and testing. Um, and then go get your, your driver's test and get your license. Today.
Yeah, I got mine on the job. Right.
Me, me too. Me too. That changed a few years ago. Um, you do have to go to an accredited school right now. I think we sent Jake for about six weeks, five or six weeks he was gone. But we do have provisions built into the handbook that when we send somebody for this, there's a buyback. So they do have to give the village a period of time back. Otherwise they're paying the, a portion, a pro-rated portion of the cost of the expense. Again, I guess I would point out too, that when we have these line items in the operating budget, we're, we're budgeting for, um, scenarios that we're estimating, right? Uh, just because we have $15,000 in the line item doesn't mean it'll be gone at the end of the year. If we don't educate anybody or nobody leaves, we don't have to hire somebody that doesn't have a CDL, those funds could remain there and potentially offset another line item that goes over for some reason, salt. Take your pick. Um, but it doesn't mean that because the money's there, it disappears.
Or at the, at year end, it goes back to the general fund. So.
You got it.
Which it should be. So, Matt?
I would just like to add that with that change, um, in state regulation for the CDL drivers, it has become substantially more difficult to recruit CDL drivers, um, like you indicated. You can make pretty good money being a CDL driver. And the village of Germantown or other municipal governments are not like the number one destination for people that get that education. So getting applicants that have that, that license, um, can be difficult and we've seen it. So we believe that trend will continue and will continue to be challenged to recruit those drivers. So this is, like Scott indicated, a reserve to make sure that we're able to do that training if we need to. And, um, you know, the other thing that I would mention is, you know, we're running on a, a pretty tight ship. So when we talk about deferring training for a year, um, that's a person that's not able to plow the roads. And that could be a difficult thing for us to overcome.
And, and that's why I'm allowing, uh, I'm not ta, I'm removing it completely. I am just lessening the amount. So you have a cushion of hiring one person to send to CDL schooling.
Yeah, and I, I guess maybe a, a compromise, if I could offer one, would be, um, give us the room for two. Um, and we could reduce it by 4,000.
And you hired one last year and I mean, the greatest predictor of what's going to happen in the future is by studying the past and looking at your's past. It seems one per year, so I'm, I feel comfortable leaving it as one. If you do for some reason hire two in the next year, then absolutely we can look at the budget next year and increase it.
Well, Matt, I'm, I'm learning a lot. I've only been doing this since the third week of April, but I've been managing budgets for 40 years and you, you're held accountable to your budget.
You are, you do.
I'm sorry?
No, he does. He, he, he does a great job with his budget and made cuts.
But the bottom line is you gotta run your business. And you will do that with professionalism and doing what's right for the village. And, and I, I, I would welcome comments from people here, but I, I'm not going to be micromanaging your budget. And we're doing that right now. But if you need to have another CDL driver because of a need and you go over plan in that particular line item, I'm not going to lose any sleep over that as long as you bring your budget in at the end of the year.
And, and that's likely what would happen if we're, you know, forced to make that decision. I just don't know what the impact would be to the other budget then.
Understand.
Now, it all kind of, you know, Steve and Matthew could probably talk about how it all kind of rolls up into a bigger account and, and I think that's true as well. But at least, you know, immediately it would feel to us as the folks operating the department that, you know, we're a little more constrained.
Uh, trusty bomb.
Is there some mechanism, Steve and Matthew, that if we did need a second person, we had money to hire the second person and could pay another $6,000?
Yeah, so the budgetary control for all budgets is the overall operating expense line. So as long as they came in under, I think the highways is, I don't know, a million dollars overall, they would still have the authority to spend the extra $6,000.
And we have the authority to spend up to, without asking the board? Director can spend up to five, 10, 15?
Oh, for a contract? Yes, up to, it's 5,000 for a department head, it's 15,000 for the village administrator, 25,000 for committee, anything over 25,000 is the village board.
So there's a way, if, if I needed a second person, there's a way to get the money paid for. Is all I'm trying to get at.
Yeah, if I, if I can just add on, on the finance director's comments and, uh, Mr. Anderson kind of touched on this before. It's, so when they're, when they're managing their budget, they're, they're managing to basically, you know, three different components in the general fund budget. The salaries and wages are, are kind of one budget. Operating expenses, which is a catchall that covers, uh, um, you know, most other things. And then, then, you know, uh, capital equipment or, or other things that are, that are specified in the budget. So, um, you know, Scott's managing his, his operating expense budget to that overall dollar amount. And, um, and as mentioned before, he does a very good job of that. You know, and there is some flexibility if they get that second person. If it's a, if it's a bad year where it's a, there's a, we have to use a lot of salt, there's, um, a lot of equipment breakdowns and he's buying a lot of things and maybe three people, uh, leave and we need three CDLs. Then, you know, we could end up back before the GGF and the public works committee to, um, you know, to get some additional budget authority.
So, uh, trusty Rick Miller.
Yeah, uh, just a question. Is this a newer line item? Is this only used for CDL or is there other training that you do with out of this line item? Um, I, CDL is the, the major component of it. There has been other training in the past, but, um, when you're looking at the, like the last couple of budgets, the main reason for the big increase was because of the CDL requirement.
Right. So we're back to the original motion and trusty paper, you flexed up to what dollar amount or you didn't?
Yes.
Okay. Is that achievable?
Yeah, I mean, I think, um, we requested it to reflect the potential need. But, you know, given the discussion, um, you know, I think we can work within those parameters.
If there, if there is a need down the road, you've got a path forward to, uh, escalate for further discussion for additional dollars.
Correct.
Okay. Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
I have another one for the highway department. Don't, don't go away too quick. Highway department, uh, the overtime, I want to reduce it from 25,000 to 10,000. Year-to-date actual is only around $6,000. For some reason, we're budgeting 25,000.
Second for discussion.
I mean, that overtime budget is primarily for snow removal. So there's a, a couple of months of the snow season here that we haven't experienced in 2025.
Sure. But yeah, and it, but this is for, so 2020, 20, I'm sorry, 2025 actual is about 6,000. Lately, for the last however many years, I know there was one weird time when we got snow on Halloween. Other than that, there hasn't been much snow even up until Christmas. So I feel comfortable lowering the overtime on that.
What number again? 10?
Uh, 10,000. Year-to-date right now is 6,000 and we're, that probably will not see any increase. So as of 2025, it'll probably end at 6,000.
That, that's where I question it. All I'm hearing this year is we're going to have one hell of a winter.
So that this allows even more. It's, I'm budgeting for even more than what it was this year.
If I could add one more thing, um, last winter was a very light winter.
Yes, it was.
So, and we have had a, a series of those lighter winters. But again, you know, we're budgeting to prepare for, you know, what would essentially be an average winter where we'd get a typical amount of snowfall. We've been lucky and we've been able to make that savings and not spend the overtime budget the last couple of years. But, um, you know, if we stack up too many of these things where, you know, if needed, we go over, then we really start to run into, you know, other lines in the budget.
Yeah, but if.
It's kind of where.
I understand, but if you go over and because we have an, and I don't know, a blizzard every day during the winter, obviously we're not going to fault you for that or if, that's something that's unpredictable. Right? I'm just saying this makes more sense, seeing as how our winters have been more mild.
Yeah. I think Steve wants to.
If I could just add in, and I, I completely understand the, the sentiment and the, the idea, want to try to, you know, keep the budget as, as tight and as, as lean as possible. I, I've been, uh, working on budgets for snow and ice controls since 1989. So I've seen a lot of ups and downs in the cycles and it's just extremely unpredictable. You know, and, and whether, whether we budget 10,000 or 25,000 when it's snowing out, those guys are going to be out in the snowplows removing the, removing the snow. But I think 25,000 is, is, you know, and, and we could, um, you know, in future years, go back and do some more analysis over a longer period of time to find out, you know, say over the last 15 years, what, what's been the average in today's dollars. But, you know, also keeping in mind that, um, if this money is not used, uh, if, if we have a light winter and we only use $10,000 worth of overtime, first of all, nobody's going to be happier about that than, than Scott and his team. But the, um, uh, that money does go back into the, the general fund balance. And it's a, it's available to the village board, you know, um, for, uh, number one, just to keep our reserves in the, in the range that's required, um, at 15 to 25% of our fund balance or of our, our general operating expenses. And, um, uh, or if, if we're exceeding that, it can be used for other purposes at the discretion of the board.
Further discussion on the motion. Trustee Jan Miller.
I would like to understand, um, exactly how many, I thought we had 20 snowplow trucks. Is that correct?
That's about to be correct. We have 22 or auctioning two right now. Um, that'll bring it down to 20.
Okay. I'd like to buy one. No, just kidding.
For sale.
Then how many drivers do we have with CDLs that drive the plow trucks?
The plow trucks, there are 14, correct me if I'm wrong, 14 routes. Um, and then we have three staff that also have CDLs but are assigned to, um, like village parking lots.
Okay. So 14 and three is 17. So we have three extra. So we have three extra plows versus people.
Well, it's, it's probably a little more than that actually, um, because, or some of the village building plow routes, those are going to be like one tons with plows on them.
Is that a pickup truck?
It's a pickup truck, a big pickup truck.
So, uh, you can call all those people in when there's a snow event? Is that right? Okay.
Yeah, that's typical.
Right, right. And so they're kind of working 24/7?
Okay, further discussion. Trustee bomb.
Yeah, I'm okay to leave it at $25,000. If, if we don't use it, it just goes back into our budget. So.
Second.
I wanted to hear about it. I wanted to understand where they're at. I wanted information before I made a decision.
I, I would like to amend and then just let's agree to like cut it in half. Because that'll be a little bit more than what trustee people are asked and it would be higher than.
Or $2,000.
No, it's originally 25,000 overtime.
And she cut it to 15.
I thought you cut it to six.
1250.
Oh, 12.
That was training.
I cut it to 10,000.
Oh, 10.
And I, I would just like to add on, I had to go grab my phone to log into the financial system here, but the current year to date as of today is 9,161.
So trustee paper, your motion was what dollar mill?
10,000.
Okay, trustee Jan Miller, you want to go up to 12,5. You haven't ma, you haven't made that motion yet. We don't have a second. Are you okay with 10,000? And again, my position is, I stated this earlier, if he, if he, he's going to do what's right for the village. And if he's overplan, he's overplan and he'll manage his buzz, budget along with staff to ensure that he comes in with a balanced budget. So we're talking about 6,000, 10,000, 12,5. To me, I really don't care. He's held accountable to his budget. So do you want to make a motion for 12,5 or do you want to keep it at 10? Cause we, we want to move forward. And I'm, I'm okay with 12,5. I'm okay with 25. I'm okay with 10. I mean, Matt and his team are going to do what's right for the village and if they incur overtime, they're going to do it. Trustee Rick Miller.
Yeah, what it comes down to is what the, what the assessment's going to be. I mean, on the, what the mill rate's going to be, but if we cut this and it is a cut, if, if you cut it from the budget from 25,000 to $10,000, that will reduce the mill rate slightly, very slightly, but it will reduce that. If we go over that, now we're pulling out of general funds. And we haven't taxed for that. That's going to be, I know everybody hearing this is going to get really mad at me, but that is the, the reality. So if you use it and you need it because it's a tough winter, we have it allocated in the budget and we have allocated in our mill rate for it. If we reduce this, then we're pulling it out of general funds and that affects the balance. So that's your decision that you have to make. I'm okay at 25,000.
I, I'd just like to state our position one more time. You know, if we're currently at $10,000 and that numbers as of today, you know, we have three months left in the year. And we don't know what's going to happen. Are we going to spend up to that 25,000? I don't know, but this was also a light winter in the earlier part of this year. You know, I think it makes sense to budget kind of somewhere in the middle. We don't want to budget for the light winter. We probably don't want to budget for the heavy winter. But I don't think we proposed that. I think what we've proposed in the budget is a good kind of middle of the road estimate for what we anticipate the overtime needs will be. I, I agree with Steve too. If we, you know, if this is something that deserves a little more scrutiny in the years ahead, then taking a deeper dive into it and looking back over a number of years. If that produces a result that shows, you know, historically, it's only been 18 or 15 or $10,000, then I think an adjustment could be warranted, but I feel pretty strongly that, you know, if we, if we take that money away based on information from one data point, one light year, that we're probably going to short ourselves a little bit.
Yeah, the, the other solution, trustee Miller, is that, I mean, the, the bottom line really is with Steve, our village administrator, he's held accountable to the budget. From a governance standpoint, we oversee that. And hypothetically, let's say it's $10,000 and we have a, a bad winter. You go over plan, conversations with your staff will be, okay, we're overplanning this particular line item. How are we going to pay for it? Oh, police and fire. You guys are favorable to plan here. We're going to take those dollars and put it over here. That's how it's done. If you can't do that to trustee Rick Miller, you've got to go into fund balance to pay for it. Cause you gotta pay for it. And my question is, we, the, the August flooding, we incurred significant dollars. We don't know at this time if we're going to get any relief from FEMA. So that is 500,000?
Yeah, a little bit under that, but roughly $500,000 total expense.
So that will hit our budget this year, real expense. And the question is, how are we paying for that? This is a perfect example of something catastrophic that could happen in 2026.
Most of that, not the salaries, but, uh, most of those expenses, we created a separate account so that we could track those pending, you know, review by, by FEMA and determining if there's any federal funds available to reimburse the village. Some of the salaries are not included in that account. We have tracked those own, we are, we did report those to FEMA as well. To the extent that we go over budget, um, if we do not receive money from FEMA, that will reduce our fund balance.
Correct.
And we could, we could see a hit to that and we haven't talked a lot about that in, um, in this particular budget cycle, but you know, the board's policy for maintaining a general fund balance is to keep it between 15 and 25% of, of our, our annual general fund expenses. And we did draw that down intentionally a couple of years ago when we used, I believe it was about $3 million, uh, to fund the capital budget without borrowing. So we're, we're, we're in the middle of that range right now. And we really don't want to draw that down any further than, than we have to, I would recommend.
I know I'm jumping around a lot, but where are we at right now? If the goal is 15 to 20%, where are we at? Approximately.
I believe around 22%, 21%.
Okay, so we have some wiggle room there if we do have to go into fund balance to pay for things. So. So hypothetically, if we don't get any relief from FEMA, um, the 500,000 hours will come out of fund balance.
Correct.
Okay, great. Getting back to the conversation this upcoming year, if Matt goes overplan because of weather related events and there's no other opportunity within the budget to take it from one bucket to another bucket, the only solution you have would be to take out a fund bond, fund balance going through GGF. So from a governance standpoint in the full board for total transparency.
That, that's correct. And actually, that would be an amendment to the budget that would require a three quarters vote of, of the full board.
Okay, so getting back to the original motion of $10,000, I'm okay with that. Matt, are you okay with that? Knowing that you're going to do what's right for the village to maintain the roads from an overtime standpoint?
I, I can say I understand what everybody is trying to accomplish, but I, I feel like it was an appropriate number in the budget.
For 25?
For 25.
Okay. Further discussion. All those in favor of the motion at $10,000, say aye. Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
Raise your hands, please. That motion fails. No, the motion passes for $10,000.
Are you opposed or in favor?
I'm, I'm, I'm in favor.
Favor the reduction to 10,000?
I am, because I know how the budget works and Matt will do what he's got to do. Steve will do what he's got to do. And if we have to take out a fund balance at the end, we're going to do that.
Last thing I have is, um, fire extinguisher, the cost. Matthew, help me out. Where did we see that?
I was going to ask you where we saw that. I recall. I remember discussing it. I don't remember which, which line it was in.
Parks. It's in parks.
Parks, contractor services perhaps?
Perhaps. It's in parks somewhere. Yeah, for having the fire extinguishers inspected. Chief Jalen, can't you inspect the fire extinguishers for the parks? And if you can, is there a cost? Are you going to charge us double because we're the village?
He will, because he's got to buy some fire apparatus, so. I honestly don't know if we can. Um, I'd have to look back into the code to see if that is, falls under that. What we typically do is we check to make sure that extinguishers have been maintained. However, I don't believe there's anything in there about us maintaining.
I don't think you're allowed to.
I don't think.
So then can't you make a deal with like Menominee Falls or Richfield or, you know, you inspect Richfield and Richfield's inspects yours or vice versa or?
It's not a better. Mean, there would still be a party that needs to actually maintain the extinguisher.
Right.
So.
So the contract that you're speaking of and the ones they have are the one, not only do they go around with the annual inspections on the extinguishers, that also is the cost of when they are used to refill them and.
To recharge.
To make sure they're working correctly.
And you don't have the equipment or capability of doing that task?
No, it's actually more expensive for us to do it than it is for us to outsource it. We used to do it ourselves at the fire department and we don't even do it anymore. It's way too costly.
So who do we, how, who do we outsource this to?
Cintas? Fire extinguishers? Yes. That's right.
O.
O and W. Falls into the same category of with like sprinkler systems and things along those lines. They all have to be inspected for maintenance, but we don't actually do the maintenance on them.
So how much maintenance do they, how often do we actually use a fire, a fire extinguisher for parks that it needs to be recharged or maintained or?
Well, there is an end of life on fire.
Yeah, there's an end of life, then you just buy a new one.
There's a, a one-year required maintenance that happens on fire extinguishers. And then when they do the test on them at that one-year maintenance, if there's any kind of defect, they repair the extinguisher too. So you budget for the inspection, which is usually a base amount, and then there's an amount you kind of build in for the potential repairs on the extinguisher.
I mean, shoot, can't we go to Costco and just buy all new extinguishers?
It also covers the reduced rate to have them refilled. And we use a lot of them.
Government is such a scam. Okay, I'm done. That's my whole list. You guys go nuts. I.
Get. Can I ask Matthew that you put up slide 15 or slide two? To start your presentation, because I think that we need to have an overview of what the budget is, the change and where the dollars are coming from, from a tax standpoint to trustee Rick Miller, so.
Yep, I'll, I'll go over the, the quick presentation here. Overall, general fund revenues are up at roughly three and a half percent. That is largely driven by increasing intergovernmental revenue as well as licenses and permits, particularly in community development. Overall property taxes make up 57% of the general fund revenues, followed by intergovernmental revenue and public charges for services. Uh, overall net new construction was up 2.14% or $274,000. State cap to our property tax levy, as you all know, to net new construction.
Uh, what does that mean?
Uh, so every year, the assessor in the state, they determined, uh, you know, the dollar value of any new development within a municipality as percentage of the overall assessment of that municipality. Uh, so overall, our, our new construction accounted for 2.14% of our overall assessment. Us were allowed, allowed to raise the levy by that percentage.
And that includes, uh, uh, new construction within the TID and outside of the TID?
Correct.
Okay, got it. And I know you're working on a forecasting report going out five years on net new construction with the current trend of net new construction and the potential impact on the budget. So we're waiting for that in December. So, great, thank you.
Uh, we increased state aid roughly $744,000, 2% over 2025. A good chunk of that was state transportation aid, as we've discussed, was up roughly $170,000 over 2025. In addition, we'll be receiving a county EMS grant, uh, for $177,000. Uh, they've committed to that for 2026 and 2027.
Go back. What is that for? Why are we getting that? Is there any conditions on that?
That's part of, and she's walking up here, that's part of the county's initiative for shared services.
I understand.
Allocating a portion of their sales tax earnings to the municipalities of Washington County.
Understand, and just for the trustees, I, I know we've kind of teed this up a little bit and trustee cuts is going to be, um, doing more vetting of this at the public safety. But there's an initiative going on in Washington County to consolidate things that uh, will eliminate local control from villages like Germantown and other municipalities. So chief?
Yeah, so the $177,000 that you're seeing is a grant that the county is providing to every fire department. A lot of the fire departments in Washington County are true volunteer fire departments. They literally go out and flip burgers to put diesel fuel in their trucks. And as you know, it's a national trend, uh, less and less people are volunteering, less and less people are participating in events in their own communities. So with some of the excess sales tax that the county had received, they are sending out these monies to all fire departments and EMS departments in the country, in the county to help shore them up until a plan can be implemented on how to, I don't want to say better equip, but how to more equitably, uh, provide EMS service within the county. Uh, one of the biggest fines that they have is the townships have been going out to bid and having the fire departments bid against each other on who's going to provide these services to them. In the case within ourself, we used to provide service to the town of Germantown. We no longer do that. Uh, Village of Jackson does. And it's also.
Or savings of how much? Approximately 20,000, something like that?
I don't even think it's that much.
Yeah.
We were providing, help me with this number, Steve. I think when we bid them last time, we used the same formula from 1990 and that was like $23,000 or something like that. And we were higher than Jackson, so they use Jackson. This money is also supposed to make it so that these incidents don't happen and so that the fire departments that lie within, that cover the area of the township are the ones actually providing service for, to the township, not that fire departments are driving across large swaths to, to get to these areas.
So, right, you know, I, it's nice that they're giving us a grant, but they've also, from a shared service standpoint, have entertained some IT related services as well. But rather than doing grants, you know, they've got control of the sales tax. And rather than giving us the sales tax, they're doing all these quote unquote, shared services things, which takes away our local control. So there's further discussion on that. I just wanted to find out if there's, if the 177,000 is conditional that we participate in this overreaching lack of local control program.
No, that is not. This would be basically that if we had to respond to the town of Germantown, um, because Jackson couldn't, that we are adequately being compensated for that or any other township around our vicinity, that we are being adequately.
That's through mutual aid, correct?
Pardon me?
Mutual aid?
Mutual aid, yes.
Right.
With the hopes.
We'll always do.
We have obligations to do that. Uh, what the county is actually trying to do is try to, for lack of a better term, set up areas where EMS responders would go with some of the larger departments and with some of the smaller departments to try and make them more of a first responder type agency with the larger agencies actually providing the transport, but nothing has been set for anything yet. These are still ongoing talks.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep.
Matthew?
Uh, in addition, we increased permit revenue by just under $200,000. Uh, in addition, we increased permit revenue by just under two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, this was due to the projected increase in development activity in twenty twenty six. Uh, on the expense side, uh total expenditures are up roughly three point five percent. Uh, this is largely driven by increases in salaries and benefits. Uh, as you'll note, uh, we did remove much of the capital expenses that were in the twenty twenty five budget. However, at the last committee, the whole uh some of those projects were reallocated back to the general fund. Overall, public safety departments make up fifty five percent of all expenditures within the general fund, uh followed up by Public Works at twenty six percent. Uh, this is a general fund expenditure uh year over year by department. As you can see, overall, uh three point five percent increase. Uh, this does not obviously take into account any changes made tonight, but those will be added as well. Uh, over the expenditures, uh sales and wages are up roughly seven, eight percent over the twenty twenty five budget. Uh, that does include the union increases for police and fire of three and a half and four percent respectively. Um, in addition, uh sixty three percent of overall increases related to public safety staffing. Uh, for benefits, health and dental premiums remain flat, uh as those funds are are healthy and have remained so over the last few years.
Uh, Steve, can you opine on the rationale for the three point five percent adjustment?
Sure. Um. Well, first of all, uh for the the union increases that were identified, three point five and for three point five percent for the fire department and uh four percent for uh the police department, those were negotiated uh through the through the state statutory collective bargaining process um and approved by the village board earlier this year. Um, the budget does include funding for uh three point five percent increases, merit based increases for the nonrepresented employees. Um, and that is is based on what we're seeing in um in other, well, a couple of things. One is to prevent compression between um uh the nonrepresented and the represented employees. Um, I think particularly in the police and fire departments, um where there's already somewhat of an issue in the uh um, the represented employees, the patrol officers, the sergeants, the detectives um who are who are getting a four percent increase, we need to keep the command staff um have a similar and what we're proposing is a three point five percent increase so we can maintain a difference uh between the the management and the non-management increase uh salaries that there there should be um a difference, otherwise uh it removes any incentive for people to take promotional opportunities into those those jobs with more responsibility. The same is true with the fire department. Uh, there are compression issues there, so recommending um an an increase of of three point five percent. Um, the uh one other thing that I should note is that uh we do have a public works uh union. Um, and uh they're uh they are governed by uh the process for setting salaries for uh the public works union is uh subject to negotiation um under state statute as well. Um, and the state statute identifies that there's a minimum increase uh for the for the represented public works employees. Um, that's set by the Wisconsin Employee Relation Commission each year, and this year that is um two point six four percent um is is the minimum for for those folks. Um, otherwise.
That under Act ten?
That's under Act ten.
Okay.
Yeah. Um. The uh um uh can also identify a couple of other reasons for for the increase. Um, one is if the three point five percent is increased is is approved this year, this would be the first year in in three years or uh the past three years, the increases that have been approved were below uh uh inflation. Uh, they were below uh the rate that was set by the W E R C. So um uh the the salaries at this point have not been keeping pace with with inflation in in general. Um, and then I have some uh information here about what other uh communities are doing uh for salary increases for twenty twenty six. Um, the city of Cedarburg is budgeting for a three percent across the board cost of living adjustment or COLA plus additional funding for merit increases. Um, and again, here, uh especially for those of you who are newer to the board and for the public, we only budget for merit increases for for nonrepresented employees. Um, it it's all based on on performance reviews. The three point five percent is an average. Some people might get a little bit more based on their performance reviews. Some people might get a little bit less, but it is, there is no across the board that everybody gets. It's all all based on performance. Uh, the city of Hartford is budgeting three percent COLA plus merit increases. The village of Slinger is budgeting four percent plus uh um merit increases. The village of Jackson is budgeting three percent plus merit increases. Thiensville is three percent plus merit increases. The city of Mequon is three point five percent plus merit increases, and Washington County has a two percent COLA plus two percent for merit increases. So um that's just some background information as to the rationale for the three point five percent that's it's included in the budget.
Thank you. Matthew?
Uh, sorry. In addition, we have modest operating expense increases. I think overall operating expenses increased only one percent in the general fund. Uh, that's largely due to increased we energy costs as well as projected increases in our insurance premiums uh for workers' comp, uh the property insurance, those types of things.
Just a question for insurance. Um, do you go out each year and get, you know, new quotes or from different insurance companies or have you stuck with the same insurance company?
Uh, the village recently switched to CivMIC, I believe, in twenty twenty two or twenty twenty three. It was it was during my time here. Uh, we went off for RFP a few years ago.
Yeah, and and just to expand on that, CivMIC is, it stands for um City and Village um Mutual Insurance Company. Um, and uh so we're one of about fifty municipalities that's a member of of that, and th- they do um, they do uh go out for bid and look for um the actual underwriters uh that are that they bring on for some types of insurance, they they cover themselves, but much of it, they they do get underwritten and they they go through that process.
Okay, so it's a bigger pool than just.
It's so it's a bigger pool and and we get better rates that way.
Okay.
Hey, Steve, could you also comment on um open positions that we have in the village?
Sure. Um.
And and when you're done commenting on that, you know, assess if they're mission critical?
Mm-hmm. Um, right now, uh the the payroll folks just gave me some up to date information on on both positions that are currently vacant, along with with those that uh are potentially vacant in the future. Um, we have right now um three police officer positions that are vacant. Um, and those are, the police chief is planning to uh recruit for those positions in in twenty twenty six when there are um spaces available in the next uh training academy class uh that's run at at several locations in the state. Um, we do have two firefighter um paramedic positions that are vacant, um and those are actually posted on the village website uh to be filled right now. I I think all of those would be mission critical. Um, uh then there are are two positions that are actually not currently vacant, but where we have had folks uh indicate that they're retiring. Um, one is a heavy equipment operator in in the public works department. This is a position that's, you know, heavily involved in in, you know, in particular in snow plowing. Um, and uh was is one of those folks who's responding to those fourteen positions. Uh, and we've actually in anticipation of the of the retirement, have started recruitment process and uh to try to make sure that we have that position filled uh uh before the snow start starts flying. Um, and then the other position that we have had in uh an uh retirement announced is our deputy village treasurer, who, um among other things, is responsible for our our payroll processes. Um, and uh, you know, ensuring that the, you know, three hundred plus folks who are on the village payroll get paid correctly um each pay period. Um, and that is uh that is a position that also we've started recruiting in anticipation of uh of um uh that that retirement because it is it is a critical position. Um, not only uh for maintaining the the payroll, but also um so that we have proper separation of duties and and internal controls that are in place. So, um. I, you know, I we have, uh this, this is a a question that gets asked um uh each year. Um, uh, we have a very lean organization in in the village. Um, you know, I I was, as I was talking to um folks uh at the library and at the farmer's market, um, you know, and asking questions about that. We have the police department and we have fire department. We have public works, and as Matthew just went through, that's eighty one percent of our budget. And then if you look at what else we have, we have the library, we have the rec department. If you take those two, those are very popular services, which which generally no one wants to see those reduced. So what remains at that point is um, uh, we have our engineering staff. Uh, and it was just a few years ago, folks remember where we were contracting out for that and spending a lot more on contractors than than we are for the staff that we have uh on board and and preventing a lot of problems that we were quite honestly having when we were relying on contractors. Um, we have three people in our community development department that handle um, they oversee the 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 contract with SafeBuild for for inspections. Um, they're also responsible for every time you get a complaint about, you know, weeds or a shipping container in someone's yard or people parking their work trucks in their driveways. Those are the folks who are responding to that. They're handling all the zoning applications, all of the community development planning processes that you see. So three people is 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 very lean for that organization. Um, we have our clerk's office, which has three people who are responsible for running all of the meetings that we have, um, running our elections, maintaining public records, all of those functions. And then all the finance department has four people. We have a finance director, we have an accountant. We have, I'm sorry, five people. We have an accounts payable clerk, uh and and accounts uh receivable clerk. And then this deputy treasurer hands handles payroll and and some other responsibilities. And all that's left after that is is the support services manager who handles H R and and information technology and me. So it is, I I know that was more than what you asked for, but just wanted it wanted to give when we talk about these these positions being critical, it's uh it it really is, uh in in my opinion, a very, very lean organization.
Plus, we have uh part of D P W, we have seasonal help that happens year over year for the summertime, so.
Correct.
Okay, great. All right. Thanks, Matthew. Go forward. Yeah, trustee Jen Miller?
Um, I just had a a question. Um. You know, we were getting um a, I I don't know what you want to call it, an employee um report. Um, probably Rick Miller remembers this uh from our the support service person. Um, the head counts, how they vary, what's open on a quarterly basis. And um that kept us abreast of what what's going on in the village. And I think that we need to um maintain that and start it up again. We haven't had a report for a while. So.
Is that through P G O?
That would be G F, yes. Thank you.
Should be a standard report.
It was a standard, yeah, but it kind of fell off.
I did.
So um that it's a good point.
Uh, on the screen, you can see a roughly ten year uh history of the village property tax levy. Uh, you'll notice two um significant increases, one in twenty twenty three. That is when the D P W billing debt service uh hit the debt service levy and another one in twenty twenty five took fifty referendum. Uh, overall, uh, over the last ten years, the the tax rate has remained relatively flat. Uh, it peaked in twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four as we got behind on our overall assessed values. Uh, once we did a reassessment or an air market update in twenty twenty four, uh our assessed values and their tax rate dropped roughly uh down to four point five dollars per thousand of assessed value uh and for twenty twenty six for dollars fifty eight cents per thousand dollars of assessed value.
Hey, Matthew, have we done any benchmarking with our our peer villages and peer cities out there to find out where we're at on the four point five eight?
Yes.
We follow line?
Yes, that over the last uh week or so, I've been reaching out to some of our neighboring municipalities. Let me just pull that up real quick. All right, I'm I'll go off the the projected twenty twenty six mill rate for these municipalities. Uh, so Cedarburg is projecting a mill rate of seven dollars and thirty nine cents. West Bend is projecting a mill rate of six dollars and forty six cents. For Washington, five dollars fifty three cents. Germantown, four dollars fifty eight cents. Hartford, four dollars and fifty three cents, and Mequon, two dollars and fifty cents. Those are the keys that uh had reached back out to me. I'm like, word.
Great.
Uh, well, that's that's certainly part of it. Part of it is their 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 property value uh per resident um is very high. The other thing is that there's some services that that we provide that they don't. Um, they do not provide municipal garbage collection. Um, so residents are are kind of on their own. Uh, with that, they have to contract individually for their own garbage and recycling collection. Um, uh, there are, and I'm not an expert on Mequon, uh but there are uh, you know, fewer uh and and rec programs um than we have, and I think just generally they've been a lot lighter on the services that they provide than than Germantown is.
And from a fire standpoint, I believe they have a not a shared service, but they've got a more like a a North Shore type district where they support Thiensville as well. So. Matthew, who are those top two?
Uh, it'd be the city of Cedarburg at seven dollars and thirty nine cents and city of West Bend at six dollars and forty six cents. Uh, these are the projected low rates, so these numbers are final, but this is what their folks had told me.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, taking a look at the tax bill of just the village's portion of of the annual tax bill uh based on where the general fund and debt service levies are today and all other revenues, we're looking at a tax rate of four dollars and fifty eight cents, roughly four cents higher than the twenty twenty five adopted budget. Uh, this is roughly point seven seven percent higher uh than for this year's budget. Uh, the average resident uh who owns a home at assessed value of four hundred three thousand dollars can expect an increase in their village portion of their tax bill of twenty five dollars or one point two two percent over the twenty twenty five adopted budget.
And then has this been updated uh from our uh last week's call meeting when we focused on the uh the capital and we're focusing on operating?
Yep, so the the capital budget won't affect this upcoming New Year's tax bill. Uh, so this this remains unchanged from the last committee, the whole meeting. Uh, what would have been affected is the twenty twenty seven tax bill, but it's based on pretty back of the envelope numbers, um since uh we don't have those model numbers for mailers, that would have saved the average resident um of on a four hundred fifty thousand dollar home, somewhere between two dollars and fifty cents and and five dollars.
For twenty seven.
For twenty twenty seven.
Okay, thank you.
And that is all I have as part of my presentation.
Trustee Rick Miller?
Yeah, what did uh what was the reduction that we had tonight in the budget? Was total reduction?
Not much.
Uh, let's see.
Probably about twenty five thousand.
Nine thousand, two, twenty four thousand, I believe, twenty four thousand dollars.
All right, um, that's what I thought. So I would like to make a motion to move something uh something from the five year borrowed capital to nonborrowed. Uh, so we can reduce the borrowing. Um. You said twenty four thousand?
Yes.
And I don't remember. I don't have the updated list of what uh what.
Yeah, we need.
We need a specific item, right, or to move that back?
I I mean, I think if um if that's the intent of the of the board, if there was a motion to, you know, fund twenty four thousand dollars in operating capital from the capital budget, staff could.
You could do that? I'll make that motion.
I'll clap that.
Good discussion. So what actually are we doing? And how would you do that?
Borrowing to nonborrowing.
Yeah, we're gonna pay for it instead of borrow for it.
Yeah.
With the reduction that we use tonight.
So and there's a number of different things, and and I think the the finance director and I can sit down and go through the list and see which is the most appropriate to move over, but in essence, this would take the the levy savings that the board um approved tonight and um and add that back uh for. and, and add that back for operating capital and reduce the borrowing in the budget, which will, you know, help with future tax rates.
Okay, and then next village board meeting, let's have just as a placeholder, a budget update. And we give a budget update because we all know that people are not watching us, they're watching the Brewers game tonight. So we want to provide some awareness, so.
Yep, we can provide a, a budget update. We can't take any budget action as we'll have already submitted the public hearing notice.
You, you will or won't?
We will have submitted the notice by then. We have to have notice submitted by October 20th, early afternoon, roughly noon.
That is the, the day of the meeting.
Correct, so, so we can provide an update on the village budget. We cannot take any action changing the village budget at that meeting.
Right, okay.
What about You can't make any
You could make a change on the November 17th village board meeting where we will officially adopt the village budget and tax levy.
And can we talk about the borrowing as well? Make any more adjustments on borrowing at that time, at the 17th?
Borrowing.
You, you can, you can have discussions and you can talk about those things, but for all of the village budget from the general fund, the enterprise funds, all of it, once, once we publish the notice for the, for the, for the state mandated hearing on November 17th, you can't change, you can't make a change from what you published before the hearing. So, you know, in essence, and this is the unfinished business item that'll come up here next, but, you know, you'll, you'll make final decisions here on what's going to be published for the, the notice, and then you can't make changes until that hearing. Then once that hearing takes place on November 17th, then you can make additional changes if you, if you would like to.
Is the, I didn't look at it in great detail because I didn't think we, you know, we have to pass it. But it had, if we made any adjustments tonight, I figured the numbers would morph anyway. So is there the borrowing, borrowing, I forget that word?
Okay, further discussion on the motion. See none? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We have one opposed.
Yeah, one, oh, okay.
Trustee Rick Miller?
All right, I have one other. I didn't want to glance over, this came up in general government and finance, but our insurance, our healthcare insurance and dental insurance is status quo. That's unheard of these days. I mean, I'm seeing double digits in, in my company for healthcare costs and, and premiums to the employees. And to keep that at the same level that it was in 2025 is commendable. And that really helps with doing a budget like this when, when you can keep those type of costs, which are seeing major increases all over the country, to keep that at the same level.
Good point. Further discussion before we go on. All right, thank you, Matthew. We are now on to item, well, the unfinished business, public hearing notice publication. Minister Craklow?
So this is, as, as we discussed, approval of the public notice. And obviously, since there were changes tonight, the final numbers are, are not exactly what's included in the packet, but this would be authorizing staff to adjust the final numbers to reflect the actions that were taken by the board here tonight and then proceed with publication. And as we discussed, the, the, we would publish this in two places. One is the, the Northwest Now, which is a journal sendal publication and, and our, at least at this point in time, our, our publication of record. In addition to that, we would publish this within the Germantown Express.
Comments, questions? And this is just informational only?
No, this is actually an action item. We do need, we need direction from the board to go ahead with the publication of, of the budget as reflecting all of the changes that were made last week and tonight, along with the public hearing notice.
I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval of the, to move ahead with the notice for public hearing with the changes as we made previously and tonight.
Second, trustee Baum, discussion?
I was
Oh, you, trustee Warren, I apologize. Discussion? See none? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Mr. President, this isn't on the agenda, but the Dodgers are ahead 2 to 1 in the bottom of the fourth.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for attending. We are adjourned at 8:30.
Do you have time for an announcement?
Sure.
Well, you've delayed, don't you have a event coming up? Perhaps you want to tell everybody?
Just a reminder, this Thursday from 5:30 to 8:30, we have our safety fair at the fire station.
Wonderful.
So please come on out and visit us and see what we're doing.
All right.
Thank you.
Good luck. All right, everyone, thank you for coming tonight. Drive home safe. And go Brewers.